Okay, well now we can return to the public session. Do you have a motion to return to public session?
Motion.
Second. Okay, we'll be returning to public session. Everybody's ready, we will start with the pledge of allegiance. You can all sit down, please. Routine matters, approval of the minutes. We have the December nineteenth combined meeting minutes and the executive session minutes. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. King, will you pull forward, please? Mr. Fisher, Stanley?
Yes.
Mr. Fordman?
Yes.
Mr. Perella?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledger?
Yes.
Mrs. Eisenbender?
Yes.
And this comes.
Yes.
Christine?
So, starting off with Keel. Uh, in coordination with Stony Brook, they celebrated its spirit week during the week of January ninth. We will be with Magical Monday. And Mrs. O., Mrs. Umtell, and Mrs. Coleman attended during the first K through five principal forum on the evening of January ninth. They were happy. They were happy for the opportunity to discuss and share the amazing things that are happening both for elementary students. Partly the K through junior professional development day for staff was filled with learning and collaboration. The Keel teachers also had a blast solving a breakout meeting scenario facilitated by Miss Ryan and Science Supervisor, Mrs. Trevi. Thank you to both of them. They held our first ice cream social yesterday, January twenty-third, and we had almost three hundred people in attendance, with more than a hundred and ten Keel families signed up. Thank you to our amazing Keel teachers and staff for all their contributions in making a great night for our community. All proceeds will go through, go towards Keel Day in June. The third annual K through five street night event is coming up on February fifteenth. We look forward to seeing our Keel and Stony Brook families there. Kindergarten registration for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year is officially open on the district website. They look forward to welcoming and meeting incoming families at Keel School during designated appointment times in February. They also wanted to. They also wanted to express their sincere thanks and appreciation to Keel, to Keisha for all their support, most recently by awarding several Keel teachers with mini grants to fund in-choral programs and opportunities for our students. We are excited to support the upcoming trick and tray on March thirty. Moving to Stony Brook. Um, on January twenty, on January second, Stony Brook School welcomed back Mrs. Najai and Mrs. Servadio from their maternity leave. Stony Brook School celebrated School Spirit Week during the week of January ninth. Our first K through five principals forum was held on January ninth. We shared information about our district goals and shared information about exciting things that are occurring at both Keel and Stony Brook, as well as sharing information about whole-day kindergarten, upgrades in technology, new playgrounds, and the activities that are offered to all of our students. On Friday, January twentieth, we held Football Friday by wearing our favorite team jersey. The Stony Brook Business Club will be visiting the high school to meet with the members of FBLA, which is the Future Business Leaders of America Club, on Friday, January twenty-seventh. Our fifth grade students are currently engaged in entering the Species on the Edge Arc and Essay Contest. And our third to fifth grade students are working on their entries for doodle for Google contests with Mrs. Bosch. Our robotics club starts on January seventeenth, also with Mrs. Bosch. And we are looking forward to our K through five roller skating night, which will be held on February fifteenth. At our middle school, the KHS Wind Ensemble and the PRM eighth grade band treated the students in chat of PRM to mini holiday concert on the day before winter break. We thank our student musicians for the performance and Mr. Stroud and Mr. Scanlon for conducting. The first PRM Principals Forum took place on January twelfth. We discussed answers to common questions we received throughout the year, including notes about attendance, lunch seating, dress code, grading, and other related topics. We also discussed new features at PRM this year, including a pilot program for making it easier for students to attend after-school sporting events, promoting Chromebook care, new opportunities for fun at lunch, moving concerts to the high school auditorium, and expanding student voices at our school. Additionally, we look ahead to some priorities for the near future, including technology, facility, and security upgrades. Our first Spirit Week of twenty twenty-three took place during the week of January ninth. Each day, students have the choice between two themes for dressing up, that we culminated with a pep rally at which our winter athletes wore on. Our students demonstrated outstanding school spirit that week. Our PRM wrestling team placed fifth out of fifteen teams at the county tournament last week. Congratulations to our wrestlers, Coach Cantella and Coach Jones on a great season. We are excited to bring back the PRM play this year. Our students will play for the Uzies Junior, and audition information was just sent out to students and parents. Performances will take place on May fifth and May sixth. Lastly, at KHS, we have a track and track win and record, so congratulations to the boys' red medley relay, including Andrew Garcia, Joseph Mendy, Jack Anhart, Matt Kispert, for winning the NJSIAA Group One State Relay Championship in school record time. Their relay team has qualified for the key at the indoor national meet in Boston. Fencing news, congratulations to Emily Ott, who finished second at the Morris County Championship in girls' individual foil. The boys' foil team of Joaquin Arguelo, Matt Wable, and Evan Gray placed third in the county. And students to attend a leadership seminar, so the Hugh O'Brien Youth Foundation Leadership Seminar in Kenelon High School is honored to announce that two of our tenth grade students will be participating in this leadership seminar. Each year, New Jersey Hoppy hosts over three hundred high school sophomores. We're on the stage for a three-day conference filled with keynote speakers, panels, skill building activities, enlightening conversations, and opportunities to network with accomplished peers and professionals. The Hoppy Leadership Seminar's goal is to inspire and develop global community of youth and volunteers to a life dedicated of leadership, service, and innovation. Conference is scheduled this year for June twenty twenty-three at Drew University in Madison, New Jersey. This year, we will be sending two sophomore representatives, Sarah Garv and Kira Simmons. Congratulations to our twenty twenty-three Hoppy representatives. Lastly, our KHS students performed with County Honor Choir, so congratulations to the fallen students who performed with the Morris Area Honor Choir this past weekend. Ariana Conroy, Megan Hyde, Emma Klezitz, Claudia Kruger, Caroline Nieto, Shay Parata, Nathan Schertz, Sadie Smith, and Michaela Tobia. The choir was made up of the top high school singers in the Morris County area, and we are so proud of their hard work and accomplishments. Lastly, I wanted to add that I know you are all aware of the new lunch option that we have for seniors. Were they allowed to leave campus during lunch? This option recently just started, although it's not applied to me and looking junior. I know that our students are very happy that they now have this option. So I just wanted to thank the board, the superintendent, and our principal, rest of the administration for working together with our student body in as possible, and we really appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you for speaking. Okay, can I have a motion to go out of order? I'd like to do the superintendent's update before the new reports move on.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Thank you. Paul and David?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead with the superintendent's update now.
I thought we were gonna do real call, call leading. We didn't want to go into that. Where's your dad? Didn't I see him come in? Fantastic. Fantastic. Great representation of what we can do. Okay, so welcome, everybody. Welcome to twenty twenty-three. I don't want to take a lot of time. I just do have a few items to update after Christina's updating her. Please join us next month. We'll have district goals update. You'll have, we'll have school boards, ethics training. And then also, our athletic trainer, Mr. Wyder, our other director, Mr. Doty, will be giving a presentation on AED and our Janet Ball. Okay, so for emergency response. God forbid we're ever confronted in a situational circumstance for our health. So if you could, if you can, you can zoom in. Come March, we do have our preliminary budget hearing. That will be a big meeting, because that is on our budget. It will include our entire administrative team. And it's an opportunity for the public to have an understanding of what we're proposing and what's included in the budget by way of capital projects, staffing, professional development, so on and so forth. That'll be followed by a regular public meeting in March. And then in April, on April twenty-fifth, it will be in the new cafeteria, not to interrupt our, our spring musical here for that budget hearing and presentation. So that'll be a big one. Three months from tomorrow will be a very big day in our community. So please, I encourage everybody to be involved and actively engaged. And Christina touched on it, that yesterday actually kicked off our high school senior privilege. And actually, last Friday, we're concurring with Mr. Mongan in the middle school. It's up for board official approval tonight, having that opportunity for our middle school students to travel back and forth and attend events. So changes, and that was also part of the district board. So again, kudos to the board for making that clear to myself and moving things forward. I know there's a lot of conversation in the community about the calendar. I understand that from a parent perspective, also from a staff perspective. So please know that my office along with the board, along with our teacher association and admin team are working together right now. I should have more information by February. Okay, so come this time next month, I'll have some more information for you. And last but not least, Mrs. Trevi, who is here tonight, is our mathematics supervisor and also has a background in instructional technology. So that too will be part of our budget as we push forward. It's not just about the Chromebook that was dropped off in twenty-one, twenty-two. It's about what can we do to better utilize it, how to make our staff more functional? What can we do for our students to push them into the global era? And what can we do internally as a board to our community to provide those resources? So there's a lot happening now. I, at this point, I want to take a step to the side. And we're here to celebrate our children and our students. So I want to start with, we have, first, we have Mrs. Sappio from the high school, student council advisor, law language teacher, chair. So Mrs. Sappio, the floor is yours. You could come to the front however you wish.
Um, so on January eleventh, Jordan Doty was elected the New Jersey Association of Student Council's State Office President. This is our fifth term with this association, but this is our first term with a president. So we are so proud. So proud to have Jordan Doty represent the entire association, represent the entire state, putting Kenelon on the map with New Jersey. And she will lead the entire state board, as well as all the student councils, and starting in February. So she has the transition meeting, and she will lead all the conferences. She will be the face of the entire association. So we're so proud of you and we're grateful.
So Mr. Mongan, at this time, I call you on.
Thank you, Mr. Mango. Tonight, we would like to acknowledge some of our elite musicians at Pearl R. Miller Middle School. We are very fortunate for all of you that have attended our concerts. You know what wonderful performers we have in both chorus and in band. And tonight, we want to acknowledge students that even among that talented a group, stand out, rise to a higher level, and have earned additional recognition even beyond that. So we have students in three categories tonight. I would like to begin by acknowledging a student that was acknowledged as a, an outstanding percussionist at the Mayo Performing Arts Center, and that is Michael Piccolo. Let's see, Mr. Scanlon, thank you for joining us. Well, Mr. Scanlon can attest, as a percussionist himself, to the great talent that Michael possesses. Take a picture and follow me around. In the area of choir, again, you know, we have such talented singers among us and in, in our choir. In our region, the Morris Area Honor Choir pulls together the students that are the cream of the crop in each middle school in our area. And we have not one but two students from PRM represented in that group. So I would like to welcome up Dylan Castellano Smith and Savannah Mangue. You know, at that, at that middle school level. Oh, and Mr. Linnell. Congratulations for, uh, thank you for being with us tonight. And again, he can attest to, you know, just how outstanding our singers are and has helped them rise to new levels as well. So, you know, again, the Morris Area Honor Choir, it is a very daunting thing to sing in front of people. And to do it at the middle school level is, is even that much more of a challenge. And then to be acknowledged as a student that rises even to that higher level, to be the best in our area, is really outstanding. So congratulations to Dylan. And as we look at band, again, looking at the students in our area that are the cream of the crop, that are invited to this group, that stand out among all of the students in our area. And this is a slightly longer list, so I'll read them. But I would like to, the North Jersey Area Band honorees from PRM are Mateo Sosniak. Luca and Elo Fiorina. Lily Cho. And Bridget Hardy. And for those, again, those of you that have heard performances, as our students have come up through Stony Brook to the middle school level, you know, it's always a treat when we get to hear our students perform. The groups that these students have been invited to perform in are even at a next level beyond that. And we are so proud of their accomplishments and so fortunate to have them with us. We thank our talented musical staff too for helping to get the best out of them and help them rise to a new level. And cannot forget the parents as well, because, you know what? A lot of times, speaking as someone who's a parent of high schoolers and middle schoolers, all you want is a quiet house. So when it's time to practice, when it's time to sing, and you say, "Please go practice, please sing, please play your instrument," your parents have obviously been supporting them and helping them rise to the highest level, so thank you as well. Congratulations to all of you.
Okay, Mr. Sood.
Good evening. And along the lines, similar to Mr. Mongan, I would also like to thank our, our students and our teachers. And I'd like to call up Mr. Stroud and Mr. Linnell to come up, just to acknowledge our students who are being represented tonight. And we'll first have Mr. Stroud, our students who were honored at the area band. Yes, Mr. Stroud?
Hey, good evening. My name is Ryan Stroud. I'm the band director here at Kenelon High School. Hi, we're, you all, thank you for being here. Thank you for letting us, let us come here and honor our really fantastic students. The North Jersey Area Band is a group of approximately forty high schools that invite their best and brightest to come and audition and perform this sort of all-star band. This organization has been providing excellent experiences for middle and high school students since nineteen sixty-five. I was a member of the bands in the early nineties. Kenelon has been sending students since the mid-seventies. And in twenty fifteen, I was honored to conduct the group, which was one of my proudest professional moments. So I want to talk to you about Hope Sereneus tonight. Hope is a really, really fantastic and unique individual. Teachers, you know, we talk about legacy students, and I believe these are students who, you know, you're gonna remember this person for the rest of your life. And for me, only halfway through her high school career, I can say that I will appreciate what Hope has done for our band program long after she's graduated. Tireless worker, a voracious consumer of music, constantly floored by her beautiful playing, her willingness to always push herself to be a better musician in person. She is one of the best musicians ever to come through Kenelon High School in the eighteen years that I've been here. And to say that I'm proud of her would be a tremendous understatement, so congratulations to Hope. Okay, Hope, if you want to stay up, we're gonna take some pictures. I'd also like to call up Mr. Linnell, who's gonna speak briefly about our choir students.
Mr. Stroud is so much more prepared than I am. That's usually the case, so, so I always say, follow Mr. Stroud. But we have, have been very lucky to, over the years, have, have students performing in area choir, region choir, and state choir, and all eastern choir, and national honor choir. And, and these students, they, they live, they breathe, they eat music. You know, they, they just are always involved, and, and they're really just so wonderful to work with. And I'm, I'm really blessed to be in Kenelon and to be here and to work with these students. We have eight students that were, we had ten students overall that were able to perform with the Morris Area Honor Choir, two from the middle school and eight from the high school honor choir. Some are here tonight, and as high schoolers often go, especially those in the performing arts, so many of them told me they had a rehearsal tonight, so they wanted to be here, but had a rehearsal to go to tonight. But we do want to make sure that, that they are recognized, in case maybe they see the video later, or I'll tell them all about the, you know, about how, all the wonderful things. I'll pretend I was Mr. Stroud and said wonderful things about you. I'll come up with some stuff to say later, but they are, they are wonderful. So congratulations, if, if you're here, please do come on down. Ariana Conroy, Emma Klezitz, Claudia Kruger, Caroline Nieto, Shay Parata, Nathan Schertz, Sadie Smith, and Michaela Tobia.
Okay, so before we pause for a five-minute recess and everybody goes home, first announcement is, tomorrow might be one of those days, so Mrs. Donaldson, I'm, um,
Where are my stuff, like?
So we'll see, so you never know in the morning, right? But whether we're here at board meetings honoring sports, whether we're here honoring academics or core extracurricular, that's our job, that's our purpose. And, you know, I started in the classroom many years ago, and I, I will always say you can never underestimate the positive impact that a teacher, it only takes one, doesn't matter to me what the grade level is or anything else, or a coach can make on a student. And at the same time, us as parents, we live in grit and bear it day in and day out. And we're here to celebrate your children, and at the same time, and I get to kind of cross over the table whole place tonight, because mine's here as well. Enjoy it, parents, it's a reflection on you. So congratulations. Mr. McDonald has a presentation, we have the order, and then it's more business, so please enjoy your next.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Okay. Aye. To the agenda, we have district board.
Where did everybody go?
The next round's waiting to come in for you. Next round here for us.
Yeah. You know, we've been associated with Kenelon School District now for over twenty years. And take a lot of pride in that. You know, we've been here through thick and thin. And when we started twenty years ago, many of you might not remember this, but it was in pretty bad shape. We came in, we were hired to do a special engagement, because the budget was just abysmal. Underfunded, there was deficits going on in general fund. There was a lot going on. And ultimately, we were hired until we knew of it at that point. And we still had to report to the town on a quarterly basis for several years. And then we got to report to them on, uh, every other year, every other, um, three, six months, sorry. And we eventually got out of that. So I've seen you when you were really, really in bad shape. And I'm very happy to say that I'm here tonight with probably the best numbers I've ever seen in Kenelon Board event. The school district is doing amazing. Now, there is a caveat to that, that the state used to have you carry two percent of your excess to the even fund balance. In the last two years, they allowed you to have four percent. So there will be some correction to these numbers next year, but we'll worry about them next year, right? Your surplus overall ended the year at around seven point four million dollars, and it was up roughly one point one million from the prior year. Now, that doesn't mean that you have all this money lying around to spend. It is earmarked for specific things, but this is as high of a total as I've ever seen. And again, next year, when you get that four percent down to two percent, you're looking at having an unassigned fund balance, which is two point two million this year. Cut it in half, you're gonna be looking at one point one million for that next year. And we'll figure out how we're going to, what leverage we pull, where are you needed? If you need some capital reserve, if you need some maintenance reserve, you know, Kerry and I will discuss our needs and ask what we're gonna do with that extra two percent that's coming out of that pot of what we have in. But again, very healthy, and as healthy as the state will allow you to be.
So that's, so that's gonna change, so it's a long way to get to carry two percent.
That's correct. It's gonna revert back to two percent.
That's for sure.
Uh, nothing has been passed to make the four percent permanent. And I think that if everybody down. Yep, it's a suspension. So with that, one of the areas that you've gone up in is your capital reserve. You have roughly three point three million in capital reserve. And to me, this is such an important item, because it gives you the flexibility to do projects throughout your district that you don't have to go back to the taxpayer and ask for that money. Right? You've taken this money over the years, you've thrown it, you've got amazing stewards of this money. And now you have this in case anything either goes wrong or is planned. Bring it into the budget, use it as you need it for capital deposits. A great way to put money aside. Again, you're, you're undesigned or you're unassigned fund balance, that year it was two point two million. And that was down a little bit from last year, but that's where, again, as healthy as the state allows you to be. Currently, you have no capital projects going on. I don't know, well, currently, it has a two thirty in twenty twenty-two, okay? At this point, I'm just gonna give a little caveat here as well. Our clients, other than those that are going for what's called a certificate of excellence, which is they issue their audit, and they give their audit to people in Tennessee to look at, to make sure that every eye is dotted, and you use the logos, there's pictures, and there's color, and there's, everything's portrait, not landscape. Other than those clients, all of our clients are going out to New Jersey. We are the only firm in state of New Jersey that is issuing school district reports right now. And we do that because we have a very busy season going on now for new municipalities. Reason we did it is because we were able to modify the opinions of the report issue. This year, you have a modified opinion, which most clients don't typically want. The modification comes in because the state of New Jersey is delinquent in getting us pension information. The information that we're waiting on, we're still waiting on. We don't expect to get it until February. That's at least eight months after your year end. It is absolutely worthless to have a report go out that late and wait around for these numbers. We discussed things with the S and P, we discussed it with Moody's, the rating agencies, to make sure that they were okay with us issuing the reports without this information. No problem, because they know where to get it. So the fact that you have a modified opinion is why we're here tonight, initiating this report, getting it out, rating agencies. We'd rather have this report now than wait around for these numbers to come out from the state. And New Jersey is the only state in all of our states that does not have this report. Every other state in the Union is done, except for us. Anyway, going back to your, you have some debt service, you have about thirteen million dollars of debt that's outstanding. That represents about fifteen percent of the maximum you were allowed to borrow. So if you had to go out and borrow, you could borrow up to eighty-five million dollars. That's the threshold. Currently, you're at thirteen million. Food service fund, this is an area that I'd like, you know, Kerry and I will talk, we're gonna keep an eye on this. A lot of money came through the federal government. A lot of money came through the federal government, through the state government, to help you out through your COVID years for food service. Food service fund balance is as high as it's ever been here, as far as I remember. You're roughly around $302,000 in surplus there. And right now, the state has backed off from going after schools who are carrying too much surplus, because everybody's got too much surplus. So I just wanna monitor this over going forward, if there's capital add, would you divide, upgrade your cafeteria, this is the time to start doing it. If you have to, you know, put some lighting expense or some custodial expense, more to the cafeteria, whatever just about the cost is, I would charge it there, because eventually the state will come in and say, you have too much money, and this is how you're going to spend it. So I'd rather you spend it on what you want, and the state come in and tell you how you should spend it. Your enrichment program is stable, it's the same as it was in the prior year, there's been no activity in that, so we're good there. And finally, recommendations, you know, another year with no recommendations, and that is a huge, huge benefit to you. Your superintendent, you're a business administrator, excellent staff, you have a great staff of people here. We, I like to judge it by how many journal entries I write, how many things do I have to do to close the year for you? Very, very minimal. That means that everything that you're getting on a monthly basis is accurate, and you can depend upon it. So kudos to Kerry, you're doing such an amazing job of books. Whatever we need, she's on it, she gets it to us so that we can do our job quickly and efficiently, and, you know, it's nice to come here, it really is. One of my better clients, and I appreciate the relationship that we have. And again, no recommendations, so.
I just want to ask you to just...
Sure.
So right now, we have $3.3 based on your audit in cap reserve.
At the end of...
At the end of...
June 30th, 2022.
Okay.
Yes.
$2.2 if I'm not mistaken. At the end, this is both...
Right, unassigned, correct.
$7.4 in surplus.
In total. So the $3.3, the $2.2, and then four other items that make up the $7.4. But there...
Well, the key in what you shared was that no capital projects, so we have a lot of capital projects that are gonna be coming to the board. So I would say maybe in the next, you'll see some differentials there, but that's coming, if you want to come back on March 7th. I was telling you that the board's ears and whole admin team over here just lit up.
Yep.
So there's a lot more to be done.
Right, and I don't wanna, you know, you're good now, you know, but when the state cuts you back, you'll be cut back to a level where you're on assigned surplus, it's kind of scary. You know, they say that this is enough for you in case of an emergency, I don't think it is. I think the 4% is a lot better representation of where you should be. Now, if they went back and grabbed it and said, hey, we owe you, we owe you to, exactly, that's my concern.
Sometimes you just have to spend it.
I'd rather see that go back into capital reserve, the difference, and then we'll worry about more capital.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you very much.
Listen, are you gonna get to Lakeland in time, so I don't get yelled at tomorrow?
I get there when I get there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks again.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Travis. Okay, so Mrs. Mahal, you are a talent for making reports and regular business, so...
We're gonna go from the auditors reporting to numbers testing.
More numbers.
Test focus. So I promised I won't use the brain. There's a lot of verbiage, charts, and explaining what they are. I just like to talk about, this is the Start Strong, which is a brief assessment that occurs at the beginning of a school year based on the prior year's standards. There are, it's like a sampling of standards, that we don't know which standards they're going to be testing our kids on, so it's sort of like, we take this with a grain of salt in terms of your some information, and that helps us with the information that we collect, that we gather from the formative and summative assessments that we administer to our kids at the beginning of the year, along with what we have from the end of the previous year. So you can look at this, this is like a silly little table that talks about, it really explicitly describes what the test design is about. So if your child is enrolled in fourth grade, and they, they're taking the ELA for grade four, and it's based on grade three content, some of the grade three ELA content, not all, we don't have their standards, as I said before. So we move forward, this is for ELA, it's pretty self-explanatory. Then we have math, a little different, because once we get to, we have grade eight, we have algebra, grade eight math, and then we also have Algebra I, which many of our eighth grade students take. So that's eighth grade content with a focus on algebraic concepts through those standards, and then geometry, and then Algebra II. So then we've got in science, here's an interesting one, and I decided to keep all three of these slides in, because this, I think it illustrates what's different about science. So with science, if a student is enrolled in grade six, they're assigned the Start Strong science, grade six, but it's based on, I, in the test information, it says grades three to five science, however, I've also heard it's like everything coming up. So the standards in grade three, if you know the next generation science standards, and the New Jersey science standards like this, it's really those concepts keep coming back, so it's very, very cumulative. And the kids are tested on some of the standards based on all of those grades, so that entire grade span. And then, again, in grade nine, the kids take science nine, but that's based on all of the middle school, high school, the middle school science content, and then in grade 12, all of the high school content, but not all the standards. So it's a lot, you know, when kids are coming in. And again, the important thing about the Start Strong tests, there are a moment in time, as are all tests, I'd like to think of this, and you've probably heard me say this, if you've listened before, it's like a Polaroid picture, not a Polaroid picture, it's like a photo album. I used to say a Polaroid picture. And I know the kids still know those, because they have those cute little Polaroid kind of cameras, if you ever recall. I had a pink one, it was awesome. But it's like taking those pictures and putting it in an album, because we have multiple measures. We've got the NJSLA, we've got, right, this Start Strong in the beginning. We also have assessments that our teachers administer to kids, running records, math assessments, this year, some benchmarks that we're working through, really digging in deep. Our supervisors are digging in deep with the teachers, really developing an understanding and creating like a portrait or a profile of what are the students learning, what do they know, what do they need to know next, based on this information, and how can we get there? And what modifications, what changes, how can we improve our instruction? Really, really thinking what we're like, deep into how we can report kids. So that's basically what I said. And now get into the numbers. So this is grades four through 10 in English language arts, total number of students tested. So the Start Strong assessment, again, a brief one, and the, we have three levels here, strong support needed, sub-support needed, or less support needed. And again, this is sort of part of the recovery after the return from the pandemic. And again, it's important to remember, it's a quick picture. Math, the same thing here, if you look at Algebra I, you'll see that the KHS score is first, and then there's the PRM score, because we have kids who take Algebra I at PRM, and then in high school. That's why you see our numbers are skewed, less kids take Algebra I, you'll see in the high school, the numbers are smaller. And then science. And this we talked about, and it looks, like when we looked at this, when you think about some of the standards across the entire grade span, it's kind of like trying to, trying to get like a moving target, you know, like you're trying to figure out what that is, but it's hard to really know. So I give our teachers, our supervisors, our building district administrators credit, because they sit with this information, and they're really trying to make kids more talented. And I think we do a pretty good job. So our subgroups, this is across the grade span. The Start Strong is administered to grades four all the way up, so we don't test grade three students. Probably one of the things that makes me, made me happier about standardized testing, because I feel that testing third grade students is a little bit, was kind of, was a nice thing, it's a nice thing not to test those third graders this way. So our subgroups, what a subgroup needs is, it's nine or higher, or higher than nine students creates a subgroup. So we have subgroups here, again, they, the Start Strong numbers did not give us the number of students tested, students tested. I know by digging in, in some of the areas, I found numbers, but the groups are like 11, 20, they're not sizable groups. You'll see an asterisk here, because we did not have a subgroup in science, because when you think about it, we test, right, we test three grades in science. So we would need a total of greater than nine kids, or 10 or more students to create a subgroup, and that's why we didn't have it in science. And then we go through students with disabilities, students with 504, and economically disadvantaged, we had very few students in that area as well, not in science. Again, considerations, which I talked about earlier, it helps us with curriculum planning, possible areas for professional learning for teachers, using conjunction with the other data points, that's really, really important, and establish a continuum of supports and interventions, and encourage conversations between stakeholders. I know supervisors, principals, other admin, we're talking to parents who have questions, because they're looking at this like it's another, like a full-year standardized test. And it's hard for us, we have to, even though we're reading this and it's telling us, this is really based on a small sampling of standards from the end of the last school year, and we're just supposed to use that as a piece of picture. When we get an individual student report, as a parent, I know, I look at that and you think, like, this is representative of my, of my child across the year. So I try to remind people, remind myself to, because I look at these too, and they're, you know, they're our kids, and we think, is this the, like, a full assessment of a student? And it's just important. So that's what we have, these considerations, certainly not exhaustive, it's teeny tiny, no care to go. And then the New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment, so this is a, I don't want to say it's a fun one, but it's really extra interesting. So if you're familiar with this, you know that this is this year, so our kids graduating in 2023, this doesn't count. And the kids know, the kids know, like, what counts, what doesn't count. And they took this last spring. So this is an overview, it's designed to measure the extent to which students are graduation-ready in English language arts and math, and the 11th grade students take this. It's aligned to the 10th grade standards for ELA, and Algebra I and geometry for minimum. And then this is the comparison with the state. So in English language arts, the not yet graduation, those are percentages, 61% of the students at the state level, like, the whole state of New Jersey, are not graduation-ready per this assessment. In our district, 44%, and then graduation-ready statewide, 39%, district 56%. And then you can see the math, 51% not yet graduation-ready, state 22% not yet ready for the district, and then ready, state graduation-ready, 49%, and then 70, 80% graduation-ready for the district. And then we have fewer subgroups, right, smaller group of students. Again, here, I have the numbers, so you can see here, 19, as you go down, the numbers in the parentheses are the number of students within that subgroup. And then we have not yet graduation-ready and graduation-ready. Per the field test. I did it quickly. So is this, does anyone have questions, you can always reach out, you know where to find me.
A question from the New Jersey GPA, are they gonna add something to that, or is it just always gonna be?
You know what, there is a link here. I was just gonna say, there's a link right up here at the bottom, and that brings you right to the page. I have not read that yet, they, this year, they, it's just, it doesn't count, right, for graduation, but through '24 and '25, they say they're using this test. So I haven't read, doesn't mean it's not there, I haven't read that yet.
Thank you.
Do you, so when they say they're using the test, it's not graduation-ready? So that's a great question, I don't know if that, I don't know if the recording picked that up over there, so Mrs. Donaldson asked that if a student is not graduation-ready, are there other options? That's what I'm hearing, and that link will bring you to the page with other options, which I can show you, but I don't think you want me to do that now. Yes, the answer is yes, is there are other options. So right now, this doesn't count, but there, there are other options, there's a big long list of what other tests, I think it's, they even use PARC. PARC and NJSLA, prior to 2016, there's a big list of what they need from each subject in the future, and that may change, as we know, with the state, things change. And past, beyond that, there's a portfolio option. So we'll be watching, see where we go with that.
Thank you.
Okay, return to committee votes. Finance, Facilities and Security, it's me. We met on the 17th, and we talked about the RFP for Board Attorney. We reviewed, Kerry put together some samples for us, we went over, we discussed them, and then she drafted, drafted one for us, we all reviewed it. I also asked the Vice President if he might weigh in and give us his input, just for another set of eyes, which I think might influence his comments. We implemented them all, and then it was posted Sunday, and it went out. So it's been out, the 7th is the deadline for us to receive any submissions. 14th is when we will notify the board at the board interview, and then the 21st, we're scheduled for the second meeting, which is one of the attachments on our meeting calendar. The RFP for the Board Architect, we decided to wait till we get attorney done, just take one at a time, committee, subcommittee's decision, regulation. We talked about some, then restructures, we also talked about the capital maintenance reserve accounts, so the actual fund balance, the audit was obviously for June 30th, so we discussed the new numbers. We discussed capital project list, which I sent everybody the link to, it's quite a list, so we need to review that, we need to have further discussions on what our priorities are, what we're gonna spend money on, and that's all wrapped up in the budget process, obviously, because we have that money to operate, and then from there, we can decide what projects we wanna move forward with. We discussed a review of other professional services, there was the regulation, at least the committee to wait till we get the attorney, the architect, and then if we want to look at other professional services, maybe next year, we'll do that, I bet. We did share, I think I shared with everybody, the Board Retreat date, we'll already have the Board Retreat, it's February 11th, and the Board, they take it for 9/12. And then we got some signed, exterior signed quotes that I also sent out weeks, but everybody was able to read through too, so I asked you guys to just review those quotes for further discussion. And that's it from the finance committee. First that, appreciate you.
Yes, we also met on the 17th, as we all did, I guess. So we talked about David, and we talked about meeting with the skip committees, and we talked about the progress for a new evaluation system, and professional development that needs to go along with that, so we talked about that. We talked about full day at K, and what the cost would be in terms of salaries and benefits and things like that, that was also part of the actions that the committees had, God save, we can look at that. We talked about the power professional wage increase, that we go to meet the New Jersey minimum wage increase, so... So take a look at that, you'll be able to see that. We also, and then really, this is the last thing, other than the kind of general stuff we talked about, all committees was, new hires and replacement teachers, we talked about those things. I think Kelly attempted to be out asking, just so for the board members, so you know. I think we have a decent amount of personnel items on, on this one. So you can always read through those if you have any questions. You know, it was good to Dave, if he has questions, or you can come to the Personnel Committee, we'll kind of answer those questions for you. So personnel, there's like certain times of the year where you're hiring more than other times. So sometimes there'll be like a slew of things on there, sometimes not as much, so just so you, just so you know that. Anything else, Personnel Committee, anything else I know? Oh, I have two notes. I don't know, James. Uh, no, I, I wish I could.
Okay, Education? Sure, um, just a reminder, the education is now education and student activities. So I mentioned some things that go on with your education, so there's some student activities. We met on January seventeenth, day three of the PMA. We talked about the possibility of having, and now it's something, we will, as long as we go with this, like, the middle school sports site editor, which is going to create the possibility with permission slip for students at PRM to be able to stay after school and be able to cross over the street and go to KHS to watch board meetings and just be chaperoning, and then back to school afterwards. We talked about the possibility of an athlete rotation, which would stagger the budget to kind of, over the next couple of years, of the upgrade, the way the college reports account. Um, we talked about how on January sixteenth, there was a staff training, it went really well. We talked about the possibility of, in addition to staff training for professional development next year, maybe have the wellness pay for staff. We talked about reactivating the D Committee, which is the District's Education and Advisory Committee. We found out that there are going to be, again this year, two pottery days. One at Keene and one at Stormy Brook, led by Coria Costco, that's definitely a favor for the students. Dave Doty and the athletic trainer are going to be covering Janus Law, and just making sure that we have enough people certified in every building to be able to do the AED certifications. And we talked about the policy, let's see, it's, Jen, I know, Mr. Wilson's going to be talking about this with the Student Council Reps and both the RFP KHS.
That one, also?
Yeah, we had a rip-roaring policy meeting. Rip-roaring, rip-roaring.
Got a lot on there.
There was a ton, yeah. And we started, we started by simply, you know, talking about what policy committees do and the, the way that policies work. And if you're reading along in your attendance, you see first reading, second reading, and you see Ms., and you see, you know, other shorthand in there. And it's really just the rules of how the board and the district operate in there. Someone that was set by law, someone that was set by reg, and someone that we set. Two things that are on tonight with the recommendation of the committee are implementing decisions to be made after reorganization. And that's pretty much how policies work. The board said, on the recommendation of the superintendent, that we need to reorganize the way that the board meetings run, and the proposals on there for first reading. There was some discussion about we need to make sure that the student representative goes first, so we can, and that's why it's on for first reading. That way you can catch things like that, other typos. And if you see any typos, I don't need to email, maybe Dave will make you adjust. The second policy that went very quickly is Policy 155. And that also came from the reorganization, saying instead of having seventy-two committees, not me, but instead of having a lot of different committees, we're gonna just have three or four main committees that you see on tonight. And the policy is, with the approval of the Republican Committee, recommendation of the committee, the board said, yes, let's go with that. Unless we want to talk about it after the sandup, we don't want to either. Also, we looked at a number of updates that came from Strass and Esco. Most of those were mandatory, and you can see them there. They have to do with board officers who invented new hall notice meetings, violent notification, and emergency instruction. Again, there were a couple tweets we may have caught, just in terms of typos or headers. There was one about, let me, I think I can. There's fees for student records.
There's fees for.
And it doesn't mean that we're gonna have mandatory fee for every student record, it's just that we have the ability to charge a fee for them. So the committee recommended all of those proposal policies and regulations to the board. Oh, we also had a discussion about another policy. I think that was in the committee report, I'm not sure, I think it's happened here, but it has to do with, the policy that has to do with students who are living in the district and other, and in less situations today, in a tent or a dorm. It was a rip-roared discussion.
Strongly.
Yep.
Okay, delegates, so it's an email, everybody, the different delegate and representative of the decisions. And what I've got so far is Jonathan requested legislative representative, nobody else requested that. Carl, you have requested KEA. Jen, you ordered between K cares and Morris County schools. Do you, do you whether you have something you prefer?
I didn't have a preference.
Yes, okay. Do you want to do education services, and do you have a?
I, I am interested in that. I also did Morris County this year and K cares, which I remember the whole time.
Okay, so why don't we put you then on Education Services, Kelly? Jen, we take K cares. Dana, Morris County School Boards. And Lenny, we do New Jersey Schools. All right, so I have that noted. Lenny, New Jersey School Boards, Morris County, Dana, Legal Rep John, Morris County, Education Services, Kelly, K cares, Jed, and KEA. So I will initially get that from the website. So thanks for your replies, everyone, appreciate that. Community relations and KEA?
The next meeting is February sixth, I'm kind of where Kelly left off. Anything to pull over, Kelly, to talk about, or no, just talk about?
No, we wrapped up pretty well. I think the main thing that we talked about last time is just we're not going to continue meetings, actually. Um, because we were gonna, all the meetings throughout the year, and we're gonna combine it, you know, with the KEA with K.
That's excellent.
And then on to Jen, we're already heading to, probably just cut all these, yes, up to, and then put these on your reps. And just change that so it flows.
I just wanted to say, Jen, I'm gonna touch bases with Jen and Dana later, because there's a Morris County School Board soon tomorrow night.
Yes, there is.
So whoever's thinking that over, you can do that tomorrow night, I'm registered, you can still register it's on. And K cares is next Tuesday night, so I'll get, make sure to get that.
Actually, thank you for bringing that up, because I did want to, I did get that, the virtual.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Thank you for reminding me, because I hadn't even wrote that down. Okay, um, petitions and hearings assistance for agenda items. If anybody thinks anything in and say, agenda items, we'll come to that now. Okay, so then, agenda items, finance facilities, it's me. Okay, we have Agenda Items one through fifteen, and then we're going to approve. We have the Treasurer Board, Secretary's Board, sort of, the, the, two, budget transfers, the Secretary's Certification Budget Line Items, Board Certification Budget Line Items, bills, which is, as listed in the agendas, there's A and B. We also have number seven, that, the recommendations for attendance. We will approve the teaching staff job expenses and sports staff job expenses, as in finance attachment A, to accept the motion to draw reports and attachment fee, to accept the donation, fifty hundred dollars, grandparent family. Number ten is the comprehensive, that will find a chain of audit that we just had a discussion on, a presentation on. To approve the corrective action plan for twenty-one, twenty-two audit, as submitted. Motion to, to set the funds, the nine hundred four thousand two hundred sixty dollars in the state of New Jersey for UV lighting, for the filtration system for Pearl Harbor. To approve the, who, is it, you know?
It's you and me.
UN, UN, uh, disability insurance provider, for this year, this school year and next school year. To approve contract, new pathway counseling for specified work and green system development for this school year. The memorandum agreement between education law enforcement officials for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And that's, that's it, one through fifteen. Can I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Discussion. You see her, this is what? Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Porbit?
Yes.
Mr. Mitch Sutter?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Yes.
Nancy Johnson? Yes. It's like a very long person.
Yeah, yes, I do have a very long personnel entry. So Agenda Item one through twenty-five represent personnel negotiations committee recommendation, while they go with my. I'm just gonna kind of go through it a little bit differently this time, to each of the newer members. Typically, I'll go through and kind of read each one, but I'll just kind of explain it as I go through, and then, and we can pause and take a little time to read them. So the first section is certified staff and non-certified staff. The first section is where you tend to see teachers, things like that. So the first one is additional sick days, and then it's usually broken into, like, resignations and retirements and things like that, and then. I suppose broken into those two things. So you'll see, in the first group of them, you'll see basically leaves of absence and resignations, right? So two and three are leaves of absence, four is a resignation, five is FMLA. And then you'll see a couple of returning leaves on there, what else? And I'm, I'm just gonna kind of skip ahead and go for the next page, which is number nine. There's another FMLA, and then you have three, three more resignations. And so that's just everything that goes. And then again, as you get the agenda and answer any questions about anything, you can reach out to me, reach out to Dave, who's obviously a little more close to it than I am. You can always reach out and kind of talk about that. And then you get into the next section, and you'll see there are pretty clearly, like, you know, appointments. So mentioned in the committee report, we have, like, a lot of times, you have leave replacements, right? So somebody goes off late in the middle of the school year, you need to replace them. So and then you'll see, you know, within each one of those, like, what the parameters are on that specific item, right? And that's something that Dave, the principal, will say, who, whoever it is, will work out, and then they'll present to us those super tense recommendations, if that, if that makes sense to everybody. So the next three, thirteen, fifteen, are leave replacements, and you can see the details there. So we'll pause, and maybe we'll take a little bit of time to take a look at that. And then you get to the next page, you get to number sixteen, and you have an additional assignment. So we will see additional assignments, things like kindergarten registrations, and we'll see, you know, chaperones, for field trips, you know, things like that.
Extra coverage.
Extra coverage, so anything like that's like additional, that's not like.
Anything that's out of your contractual stuff, that has to be?
Has to be approved by the board, so like, if you're going to be a gate day worker at the football field or something like that, that all falls under that. And then you get into non-certified staff, and it's the same thing, broken down into reservation leaves, and then appointments, and then additional assignments. And that's where you have things, like, you'll see there playground cafeterias, you'll have, you know, power professionals, custodians. Under additional assignments, and you see number twenty, you'll see, you know, a period for a power professional to do that, and playgrounds. Kindergarten registration under twenty-one, twenty-two. And this is where you also see, like, the coaches and the co-correctors with us and things like that. Those are usually attachments at the end, so that's, that's, I think, a lot of stuff. So you can see, attachment at the end, you have all the coaches and the co-correctors and things like that in there. And then, and then where it's not a big list, if it's a big list, it's usually attachment at the end. If it's not a big list, we see table ones, that, that would.
And just to note on that, I mean, it's the italicized ones for approval, all the other ones have been created separately. Like, one thing, so it's just one thing plus, but it's just the italicized, so we have approved everybody, right? But like, sometimes you get a volunteer, or somebody, like, for the plan, you see that. So that's just the, what's in the, what you're creating.
Occasionally, with coaches, you have, like, one coach, you know, and you start the season, and then leaves. Another coach comes in, so that list will change, and then people will have to vote on that again. Is that, is that pretty well explained, personnel, does that make sense to Dave? I can't really see. You're good with that, okay. So I'll ask for a motion to approve, item number one through twenty-five.
Motion. Second. Any other discussion?
If you guys want to take a minute and look through that, I don't know how much you have to take. Okay, okay. So Jonathan's bringing up a good point, so occasionally for the new board members, you may need to refuse yourself from voting on, on something. So if you have a personal interest in something, and that doesn't apply just to personnel, it applies to education or whatever the case is, you can refuse yourself from voting on it, or you can abstain, which is basically saying you're new. But you can recuse yourself and carry market data as you're refused, and then, or just voting six months or whatever. So that's just something to, to know. The other thing is, like, you can abstain on something as well, if you're not sure. Typically, you can do that if, one, you either had a conflict, or two, you didn't feel like you had enough information to vote for. It's, it's not really meant to be something like, I don't want to vote on this, it really should be for specific reasons. And it is okay to vote, but I don't want something.
Okay, the other discussion. Mrs. Porbit?
Yes.
Mrs. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Mitch Sutter?
Yes.
And Stiles?
Yes.
Education and Student Activities, Mrs. Pearl.
Agenda items number one through seven represents the Education and Student Activities Committee recommendation. We will be able to monitor. Number one, the District Evaluation Committee. Number two, the out of district basis represented in Education and Student Activities Attachment A. The field trips that we recommend to be approved for the academic catalog competitions, Morris County Autocore, the NJASC, the Deca State Competition, and Student Council. The structured learning experience at Grand Pizza. The Education and Student Activities Attachment B. The Title I Supplemental Support Program, Title I Supplemental Support Program, considering number seven. As listed by the staff members, school hours, and program levels.
Have a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? So you know this key, we go forward. Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Porbit?
Yes.
Mr. Mitch Sutter?
Yes.
And Stiles?
Yes.
And Policy?
Yeah, agendas one through four represent the policy committee's recommendation. We'll vote on them as a group, as I reported in my committee report. First one, our policies on first reading involving the conduct of board meeting, that's revising our, agenda, the way that we flow, and also the names and roles of board committees. There's also that list that we got for updates and revisions, most mandatory yet, for Carrie's policies and regulations. Also, note in there, abolishing policies, six forty-eight, point eleven, and point thirteen. Number three, accepting the final rating ended up, adoption of November twenty, twenty-two, the AP report, and exception on first reading, the December twenty, twenty-two AP report.
How about a different?
Motion.
And special item? So.
Kelly said, Kelly, and David.
Yes. There's, yeah. There is. Just the chat. Okay, okay. All right, so the number four, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the vote on the first reading. I'd like to make a motion to postpone the first reading. So we have to. Do you have to be able to?
Yeah, I have a motion to.
So. Yes, let's go. Motion to approve.
Make a motion. I didn't.
Yes.
So I'll amend the motion to provide.
Nice. I was seconded. And then, so can we hold for the. Mr. Eisenberger?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrot? Sorry, I'll hit that. You support, I said that. Yes. Mr. Mitch Stowry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Johnson?
I'll move to, I'll move item number four to refer back to the policy committee. But it will refer back to committee, yes.
Where are you just? Yeah, we just.
Oh, so, so I'll wanna move to refer that back to committee.
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
There's a second.
And do you guys wanna have some discussion before we go?
Um. Yeah, so we have to refer to the second committee. So.
Okay, so the motion is next, we refer to the second committee.
The policy committee. So it's being referred to the technical committee. And that's a discussion will have at the end of this. Okay? Does anybody have any questions? So motion to approve.
It was my motion.
I have.
Okay.
Discussion's been completed.
I think it was anybody else I spoke to.
Is there any other questions? Okay, so, please come aboard on moving item four to. Mrs. Perrot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenberger?
Yes.
Mrs. Porbit?
Yes.
Mr. Mitch Stowry?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Committee of the whole, we have unfinished business regarding the twenty twenty three meetings. We had a lot to go over with various RPs, deputy discussion budgets. It has been in the attachment, which we sent out to everybody. So we have a motion to approve the board's calendar for twenty twenty three.
Motion.
Second, second. Any discussion? Let me get the other chip. Okay, all right. Saying we go for the discussions, can we move to approve the board's meeting calendar for twenty twenty three? Mr. Eisenberger?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrot?
Yes.
Mrs. Porbit?
Yes.
Mr. Mitch Stowry?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
New business. The only thing I actually should have brought this up under the calendar. We need to ask that you can do a fixture meeting at the end of our meeting. Because it's the twenty eighth, it's in February.
February. That's fine.
Is that a design problem then? I just wanna make sure I can check the meeting.
Okay, I'm here, I'm here.
So we won't be early? I think it's.
Fine, that's good. The meeting is not right there actually.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, so we'll just do under unfinished business for twenty. All right, so just move it to the end of the meeting as opposed to super tense. Okay, great. So I'll let her know that that's a problem. Okay, anybody have any good business? Okay, response to saying you received an initial letter, uh, Kimon voting.
Tracy Davis. Recently, an email was sent from Peter Olson to Pat Constance District Judge David Doherty. My letter contains a call to time to encourage and teach their partners some key points and styles to improve their own game. Their kindness and generosity showed through their points. Should make each parent coach and administrative proud. I believe the term used to describe the calls was last acts. Clearly, Kimon called a group of teenagers that have a dedication to the game, continued their big making KDA. Coach Sulu brings acceptance of all levels, personalities, and abilities to the players. Chief follows his lead to work together to improve their individual and team game. Now their new comp, which you can see by your sports, keeps a quadrant three shape. Coach Sulu also pushes and encourages the kids to be who they are. Roll their best to support each other and make any change on sports collectively. Not just because they look a green cave, because it's a special sport and team.
Yeah, that's, I believe you wanted not to leave the public to rest. There are exceptions to see that for volunteer, kids' wisdomship, and sharing. Petitions and hearings assistance for knowledge.
Do you have anything out in cyberspace?
We had absolutely no questions.
I, I just wanted to say hello to the new board members. If you haven't met me yet, I'm Tina Sutfin. I am the president of our association. So welcome. I absolutely look forward to working with you to foster the relationships that have been put in place over our, our change of administration. And we're changing again, but just like before, we're moving forward in a wonderful direction. The teachers are excited. The feedback is as positive as I've, I've seen in a lot of the years. And we thank all of you for your support, the generosity, everything that you've been provided for us recently, giving us a voice to work with Mr. Mango and you to make some changes happen for, for the district. And we couldn't be more thankful. So welcome to you. And again, we look forward to continuing this journey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Board member comments? Talk to mine first.
Policy sit down. I'll just, I'm happy to be seeing everybody here tonight and wish you all to stay warm and dry tomorrow.
Go Snow. Kelly?
So Christina did a phenomenal job tonight. She's our student representative. And it just fills me with such happiness to see how full the schools have gotten and how many things are going on at each and every school. And I think the kids are just really thriving and benefiting from that at all the schools. Maybe in our, in our meetings tonight, talking a little bit about COVID. I think we can't really appreciate where we are unless we think back where we come from. And I just don't think anyone's gonna ever take it for granted again, you know, that we just have so many wonderful things going on. Kids academically, musically, just socially, there's just such wonderful things happening in the district and I'm gonna appreciate it. And I know we have very busy next couple months, so we're all gonna help it out with our finance. But I know tonight was senior night for our wrestlers, so congratulations to them. Our basketball players, we're last weekend, we've done the girls, just exciting things going on all the time. So I'm gonna sleep with my pajamas on inside out tonight. I don't know, first noted. We'll see what happens. I don't know.
Days, man. That doesn't help when fucker already called. That's what I've been told.
Jen? I just echo what Kelly's saying. It's just, it's exciting to hear all the wonderful things happening in schools at all the different levels. And to see all the students and their successes in the beginning and in the end and hear about the great things that's going to be other activities or different, it's a pleasure to hear about it.
So I'm just grateful to be here. I'm grateful that people make this school seem like we're playing, we're helping the childrens that are without the opportunity of education and environment to be in. And I also do sense the same for sort of G G family working, having the children here to acknowledge the athletes, the students, the artists, musicians. It's very nice. So very, you know, happy tonight. Community. So, thank you.
I'll say my son came home from school today talking about wearing his pajamas inside out. Where that came from. No, I, I said, I, you know, I, what everybody else said, I think, scene. Especially, you know, we typically think about sports, but also think the arts and stuff, having all those things. That was really, really great. And also wanna thank you, the rest of the board members who have already been here, being very welcoming, the rest of you guys.
Yeah, I will start off by saying thank you to Jody for the testing presentation. I know everybody kind of cleared out before that, but you did a good job. Thank you to, I guess, John, who's not here anymore, for the district board support. But especially thank you to Carrie for that, just because, how many years in a row Carrie got all the findings? Probably four or five, right? Something like that. All right, so Carrie one year with an honor finding, so I think that kind of, I mean, it's nice to kind of hear that, but I mean, it's something that probably shouldn't be called out. So it's me, you know, Carrie, the work that she does, you know, Dave, you know, the work that he's doing. You know, for me, kind of stepping in as an interim kind of thing, so everybody kind of keeping us on track. And to have no findings in a, in a transitional year, I think is, is great as well. Thank you to Mr. Mongan and Mr. Suda and I guess Mr. Stroud is, Mr. Stroud, Mr. Stroud and Mr. Lenall, everybody here who presented. So thank you for doing that and congratulations to the kids. And, and welcome to the new board members. I hope we're not too overlonged so far, but again, feel free to, you know, reach out to us.
I, one of the board goals was to celebrate this district successes at meetings and to improve the O E processes. We just hit the ground running on that. And I really wanna thank administrators for coming, coming up with ideas to celebrate the kids, being here to present them. Because it really means so much when you guys are doing it. You see that more and really know what they're contributing. And also for the supervisors that have, um, Tina, that's your boss. So I do appreciate that. I know it's late and I've been here all day with kids, so. Carrie, once again, thanks for keeping the most clean. Makes our job a lot easier. It really truly does. And then it makes us have, we're, we're ready to hit the new budget with numbers we can really rely on. If we didn't know that, it would be really hard to create our budget for next year, which is really one of our biggest jobs. So I really appreciate that, Carrie. And to all the board members, past board members who worked, it took us to hire a new superintendent and new board members who are gonna help us get some attorneys and architects. We get to know each other really well, for the hard work that we put in doing it. It's, it's reflective in what we see every day by all these successes we've started. So thank you for your efforts. And Dave, thanks for steering us in the right way and helping us in our ways. So go Snow. I don't anticipate anybody tomorrow. I am definitely wearing a hat.
You extended us.
Motion to go and be closed.
Motion to go in closed session?
Second.
All right. Well, favor?
Hi.